It is now five o'clock. April 18th, 2017. I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council's seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the City as Housing Assets' successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Negretti is absent. Mayor Protem Cox. Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't see anyone in the audience at this time, so can we have our city attorneys close session items, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. While we have nine items listed on the agenda, we do not need to go into closed session with respect to actually quite a few of them. Item A is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2. The facts and circumstances are set forth on the agenda. We do not need to have a closed session on that this evening. Items B, C, F, G, H, and I are all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1, and that's the litigation between COMAV Technical Services and the Airport Authority. The case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Again, with respect to those items, we do not need a closed session this evening. Items D and E are both real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. The property locations and the negotiating parties are both set forth on the agenda. Those items we do need a closed session on. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular 6:00 PM session.
Thank you. We will now recess to our closed session. It is now six, six o'clock. April 18th, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the City as Housing Assets' successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had nine items listed on the agenda. However, we only went into closed session on items D and E. D and E were real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. The property APN numbers and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. The other items were litigation, anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2, which was A. Items B, C, F, G, H, and I were all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1, which was the COMAV litigation. As I said, no closed session held on that. So only D and E, and there was no reportable action with respect to either one of those items at this point.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Invocation will be led by our city manager, Mr. Doug Robertson, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief John Schuler. Please stand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together this evening. You're reminded of Apostle Paul's letter to the Romans as we meet as a governing body that reminded us or told us that there's no authority except that which God has ordained and established. So all authorities exist because of God, including this body, including our governor and our president, many of whom are protesting against now. And whether you agree or disagree with the statements made by this council, by the governor or the president, all those authorities are established by you, Heavenly Father, and we thank you for that. Most of all, Father, we ask you for a calm meeting, a good meeting with healthy discussion and good decisions. Father, we especially want to thank you always for sending your son, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins. We pray these things in his name. Amen.
I do have a special presentation. It's a proclamation, and I will come down and do the presentation. Lesford Duncan, please approach the dais.
I'll be accepting on behalf of Lesford.
Very well. Would you like to stand over here?
Absolutely.
On behalf of the Victorville City Council, I would like to present you with this proclamation proclaiming April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Victorville. Effective Child Abuse Prevention Programs succeed because of the continual raising of public awareness and dedicated community partnerships working to protect children. Thank you for your organization's advocacy on behalf of our community's children. Thank you so very much, and I'll present this to you.
Thank you so much to the City of Victorville. Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of Children's Network, they did want to say thank you and also share a few statistics about your city. In 2016, or 2015, the City of Victorville received 3,192 referrals for child abuse. In 2016, that number was 2,793. In 2016, overall in the county, they were able to exit 83% of those in foster care to permanency. So we want to thank you for the support, and we want to thank you for the encouragement.
Yes, Mayor Garcia. The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the written communications or public comments sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Penal Code Section 549-57.9, Penal Code Section 403. All documents are to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there are a couple of revisions to tonight's agenda. The first revision is to item number B1, the public hearing item. Staff is requesting that this item be continued until the May 2 regular city council meeting. The next revisions are to agenda item number nine. Staff is recommending at this time that the item be removed from the agenda. But for the record, there are two letters that have been received that are on the dais and that have been made available to the public. The first one is a letter from the Chicano Latino Caucus of San Bernardino County requesting support of AB 199. And the second is a letter to the City Council from the Building Industry Association withdrawing its opposition to AB 199. And those are all the revisions I have, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, we do not have any appeal hearings. So we move on to public hearings. Item B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against amending and adding sections to the Victorville Municipal Code. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council open and continue the public hearing to May 2 after taking testimony.
At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do not have any cards at this time. Therefore, I close the public hearing.
Continue.
Continue the public hearing. We don't close it.
Oh, that's right. Correct. So I do not close the public hearing. This will be continued to May 2, 2017.
Yes, you do.
Yes.
Yes, you do.
You do.
Yes.
That is correct. That's the intent of this provision. Correct. More than two years out, plus there are a whole number of other requirements set forth in the proposed ordinance that you have to go through and make findings and determinations if you're going to agree to a lien agreement, as opposed to going the regular route of bonds and other securities. We haven't done that, I don't believe. Doug, do you know?
I don't know if we have or not, but these are mostly for maps, for projects that aren't going to be built at this time, but they're going to be recorded at this time. Ultimately. Correct. Not having to put up bonds in the interim. Correct. Correct. Before they go to an actual construction phase, they would have to put up bonds, which would protect the city in the event that they don't ultimately complete the public infrastructure project.
There are times.
This is, the way it currently reads, these would be good for three years. They could ask for a three-year extension, but it is not for an indefinite period of time. There is a three-year limit on that. A three-year limit, and then a review if they request an additional three years.
I have a question. Since the city would have a lien on the property, it couldn't change hands without the city's permission, could it?
That's correct.
More of a legal question.
That is correct. There are a number of protections we have in there, assuming you even agree to go to a lien agreement so that you keep your priority on the property.
It can't be uncovered with debt.
Correct. You are taking a first priority position, which is part of the requirements set forth in the ordinance.
And we're going to get an appraisal on the property.
You get an appraisal on the property. You have to make findings and determinations, so there's still a lot of steps that the developer's going to have to go through to get one of these.
Can staff cover all of this and have it back at the next meeting, or is this going to be enough time?
I think a lot of that information's already in the staff report in the ordinance, but absolutely, I think staff can respond to these issues.
The reason for the requested delay is the building industry took issue with literally one small section having to do with the value of the lien versus the value of the property. And after talking with them briefly via email, actually, I shouldn't say talking, but I'll say that we tend to agree with their position, because on the front end of a project, the value of the land isn't as high as what the lien would need to be. But on the back end of the project is when it becomes a problem for us. So we have a meeting on, I believe it's Monday, to work through that remaining issue so that we can easily get it back on the council agenda for May 2.
So if the project increases in price, then the lien amount would also increase?
No, it wouldn't. What we're looking at is trying to make sure that, or find a way to give them some relief at the front end when the value isn't there.
The lien would remain the same. The value on the property would go up, so you're far better protected in the event that the property's developed in the future.
Right.
It just means your protection is significantly stronger.
All right. Very good. So this will be continued then to May 2, 2017?
Yeah, I think so. Maybe other questions?
Other questions?
I have a question. So prior to Kennedy asking questions, B1 and B9, can someone explain the B1 and B1 agenda item? Why is it that I got here an hour ago and had no clue what was happening? Can you explain the process? What took place? Who adopted what? Can you please let me in? I'm really confused at the moment.
On B1?
B1 and D9.
B9, I think we should handle when we get to D9. We're in the still the public hearing portion of B1. The only reason this is being.
Well, even before you do that, there was a synopsis including B1 and D9. So I like that clear beforehand, and then when D9 comes, I'll ask the question again for the clarity of that agenda item at that time.
The only thing on B1 was staff wanted to continue the public hearing, right?
Correct. That's the only requirement on B1 is request by staff to continue based on their need to discuss, have further discussions with the Building Industry Association.
So was council notified?
It was put on your agenda. It's on your agenda, on your dais.
So B1, I have something here that says an hour ago that it's going to be delayed. That's what I'm asking.
Staff is recommending for a continuance of this item to open the hearing and then continue the hearing to the May meeting.
So what's the process? So then, in other words, the process becomes right here, right now? The city staff says, look, we want to have that, and so right now we're listening to that, and we're going to be adopting it or rejecting it?
Correct. You can agree to continue or not continue. Staff has recommended that you open the public hearing, continue the item, so no decision's going to be made tonight. Decision will be made ultimately on May 5, at which time, you know, all council member comments and any public comments will be taken before you act on this item. There's going to be no action on this item. Per the request of staff, if you don't continue it, you could take the action tonight, but, you know, that's not what.
So in order for staff to do that, does someone have to make a motion? Does there have to be a second, or is that obsolete?
You don't need a motion typically to continue an item. The mayor can just open the public hearing and continue that meeting if there's a consensus.
So then, in other words, if I were to continue an item, there'd have to be consensus, so a vote would have to take place.
You should have a consensus. A point of clarification, is there a consensus that it's be moved to the May 5 meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
What was the question?
Just to be sure, it's May 2.
May 2.
May 2 meeting.
All in agreeance.
Of consensus. Yes, I do.
So this item will be continued to May 2, 2017. Now we move on to item B2. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against a notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the La Mesa Road, Nescuali Road, Hispania Road, and Amethyst Road roadway rehabilitation project. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council adopt and approve the notice of exemption.
Wait a minute. Hearing is to approve a notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption. Are we approving a notice of intent, or are we approving a notice of exemption? And why do we have to do an intent to do a notice of exemption?
The subject of this is a notice to the public of the intent to adopt a notice of exemption. So the recommendation is to adopt said notice of exemption.
Not a notice of intent.
No, no.
The notice was an intent.
Right.
To inform the public of the intent of the council.
We intend to adopt it.
That's a good question.
But the arguments are for and against a notice of intent? Come on.
Yes.
But we're not doing the notice of.
You are hearing arguments for and against the notice of intent to adopt the notice. Yes. It is awkward.
We didn't come up with it. We're just following the law.
So what are we voting on? The intent or the exemption?
The exemption.
I open the public hearing at this time. I do not have any cards. Any other discussion or? I close the public hearing. I don't have any cards or any requests from public. I close the public hearing, and now we have comments from council members. Or do we have any other questions?
Yes, I do.
Looking at this agenda, B3.
We're on B2.
I'll move approval.
Notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption.
Notice of intent to adopt notice of exemption, B2.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Non-opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item B3. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against a notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Green Tree East Slurry Seal Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council adopt and approve the notice of exemption.
I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards from the public. Therefore, I'm closing the public hearing. Do we have any comments or questions by council members?
I do. Mayor. Is this Green Tree East, or is it also Green Tree East and Project 2, which is logistic airport? The map shows both, but the notice says Green Tree East. What'd I do? What'd I miss?
That is a good question. Looking for Mr. Gingler to come up and explain that.
It's both, actually. Both projects. They're combined in the same contract.
The title has been shortened for unknown reasons, I guess.
So to be clear, this is for Project 1 and 2, Project 1 being Green Tree East and Project 2 being-
Phantom West and Phantom East.
Phantom West and Phantom East.
As shown on the map. Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Cox.
Yes, it is all those.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I do. So I'm looking at agenda item B3. It's a public hearing to decide to hear arguments against and arguments for the item. What's the purpose of the public hearing? The question that I'm asking.
It's a requirement of the California Environmental Quality Act that you have a hearing when you do a notice of exemption to determine if a project is going to have environmental impacts.
And this is the opportunity for the audience, if so be it, that they-
Absolutely. It's an opportunity for the public to make any comments regarding whether or not they have concerns about the city's proposed notice of exemption of environmental impacts.
Okay, so I don't have issue with the notice of the exemption, but I have issue with the way the process or the procedure is going to take place. You noticed that in the same agenda, you have item D3, a written communication, and written communication would be? I'm asking a question.
That's the actual project, the Slurry Seal project, I believe.
We have about three minutes for people to come give arguments for and against, and then immediately, when we go to D3, most likely, we all vote on this, which means that the people's voice isn't being heard. I'm concerned about this process because it blatantly pushes, in the face of democracy, the lack thereof. I was voted to represent a voice, just as many of us were, approximately 125,000, the people had voted in, and this process, I don't know if we can change it, or it's, what's the goal of the expediency of something of this nature? And it's not that I'm against the slurry project, none of that. It's the process where we put something on a public hearing on an item B, and then immediately put it on a written communication. Because in my opinion, and I've asked several of my audience members as well, what it does, you're not hearing the people's voice within those three minutes, because we get to vote on it immediately. So all I'm looking at is, is there a way in the future, when we have something in public hearing, where we have enough lag time, so we don't have the same written communication with the same agenda, so that individuals that are coming up to voice their concerns for or against, that this be changed? Is that a possibility that we can bring into discussion?
City has never set forth specific time limitations with respect to appeal hearings or public hearing items, so I haven't heard any time limitation with respect to this. I just don't hear there's any comments on this.
What do you mean with time limitations?
You were talking about a three-minute time limitation. There is no three-minute time limitation on these public hearing items.
Right. My concern is, if you have, we can spend here five hours, for instance, and we're still going to vote on it on D3, which means it didn't matter that we spent the five or three minutes here. So I'm just concerned about the process that has been done for many, many, many years, and it's come to my attention that that could be a way that we cut off the voice of the audience. So once again, this is what I've observed. It's not that I'm against what is going to come up. It's the process of making something maybe business-like and very expedient. I know I spend a large amount of time with staff discussing this very same concern.
Yeah, so a couple of things. One, the public hearing is actually closed at the end of it, so the public hearing portion is over, and therefore, there's no more public hearing on it. So if you got additional information after that point, it would be after the close of the public hearing, so. And then the other thing is, it, if issues were raised during the public hearing, we could very easily continue this item at a later date if we found that there was something meaningful brought up that needed to be researched. In fact, if, especially on a sequoia action, if meaningful environmental quality questions were raised, we would be required to continue it until those were answered. So the fact that there was no questions, and the public hearing is now closed, there's no reason to wait a week, or two weeks, or a month, or something to reopen or have another hearing. The hearing's done, it's over, it's closed. That's why we put the item on. A lot of times, they are literally back-to-back and taken as one action.
I see that there's-
Happened a number of times, where we've had objections and we've continued a public hearing.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out something. I thank you for saying that. That was the last of my comment.
Was there a motion on second?
There needs to be a motion, yes.
Question?
We need a motion.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item B4.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to recuse. I have two clients who are on the list receiving-
Be excused. Item B4, Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council conduct a public hearing to receive citizen and agency comments regarding the draft fiscal year 2017, 2018 through 2021, 2022 Consolidated Plan and draft fiscal year 2017, 2018 Annual Action Plan, adopt the CPD Grants Review Committee recommendations, approve and adopt the plan as presented for submittal to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents for submittal to HUD.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do not have any cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And any comments or questions by council members?
I have one question, Madam Mayor. Sometime back, at the urging of the whole council, we established a two-member council committee to meet with staff, review those applications. And those two individuals are Mayor Garcia and council member Negretti. And I assume, with the item being on the agenda and the public hearing, that both of you have reviewed the documents and agree with the recommendations?
Yes, we have.
Yes.
Thank you.
I also have a comment. So I was, I looked at these, the community services, and I noticed that, I think it's four of them, for the city of Victorville. And so I, in a time past, I had asked how community services sustained itself, and it's my assumption that the CDBG block grants are where some of this sustaining comes from. I'm not sure. I still have a lot of questions. Although we do have two individuals that are delegated to this committee, the committee doesn't report back, so I do my own independent research. And so this is how I take time. And so I'd like to know if these community services, when the city applies, is it going to the city, and can you tell me a little bit more about this? Because I see one, two, three, four. Four of them for the city of Victorville. I just want to make sure that it's not a conflict of interest, because we don't want to make it perceived as that, so I'm asking those questions.
These are city facilities. These are city services that are provided within the project area. I don't know, Keith, if you've got something more than that?
Not much more. I mean, the city, there are certainly eligibility requirements for not just city, but also for nonprofit organizations. City is an eligible applicant for these funds, so long as the project it proposes meets the overall goals that are outlined in the various plans that get approved. So with that, these are really intended specifically to supplement special programs that the city has not been able to identify funding for separately.
And how is it, has this been for the last five years that the city of Victorville has continuously received this? How long has that been? What's the time spectrum?
I think there likely is a different timeframe, depending upon which particular project you're talking about. For example, community services, Sixth Street After School Program, it feels like at least five years, but perhaps even longer than five years, and that's a pretty amazing after-school program. And I think because they've been able to demonstrate such a success and meaningful benefit to the community is why, in that particular case, that program would have been awarded over such a long period of time. The Library Home and Educational Literacy Program, I can't speak to some of these specifically, and maybe I'll allow staff, if there's a little bit more detail. Crime-Free Multi-Housing, as an example, that's something that's been at least 10 years that I can remember, because of the value that it provides to the community. On the construction side, some of these look like new projects. The one that is seeming to be recurring is because of the commitment the city council has had in trying to help improve the library. And in this particular case, I believe the improvements are slightly different than past improvements, but it's for a similarly-natured project, such as the ADA improvements at the city library, along with the carpeting project.
Okay, so then four of them are for public service, and then 10 of them are for the construction. There's 10 of these, right? That's what I'm looking at. I'm thinking community services falls under the city of Victorville. The development department does as well. Economic development rings a bell to the city of Victorville. So does Public Works.
There's quite a few, counting them right away, it's maybe more than 10, just on construction and maybe to help. I mean, there's different designations for which these funds can be spent on, and there's specific percentages that can be spent on public service. There's a specific amount that's allocated just for public service programs. Construction money is always greater, and actually with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Sophie.
Josie, thank you. Maybe you can give clarification to a lot of these questions?
Absolutely. I think the question was specifically, I'll go back to the public services, how long the funding has been in place for this, specifically for the city programs. So as we discussed, economic development administers the CDBG program, and various city departments, depending on which programs they oversee or plan for the upcoming fiscal year, apply, just like the nonprofits. Sixth Street After School Program, as Keith mentioned, has been funded for some time, I think at least the last 10 years. Christians Department, actually, is the applicant, and I've been involved for at least 10 years, and I know they've received funding. There was a Brentwood After School Program that was, that received funding in place of the Sunset Ridge Summer Program. So that's a more recent program that's being funded, but it's simply a different location, same basic program, after-school programs for our youth. Crime-Free Multi-Housing, which is administered by the police department, has received funding for at least 10 years. Maybe one year they didn't apply due to different staffing that they had there. On the construction projects, so you're not going to see the same exact construction projects funded unless it's a two-phased project. It might be from one fiscal year to the next. Otherwise, each department is going to look for eligible activities. In this case, and in this year, as you can see, there are quite a bit of ADA improvements and upgrades that need to be done to various public city facilities, and those are eligible expenditures under the CDBG Construction Program. So there were a lot of successful applications this year submitted by the various departments. And, let's see, I can speak specifically to the Economic Development Department's Single Family Curb Appeal Program and Fazod Improvement Program. This is the second year that funding has been requested and received for those programs. They are aimed at improving the housing stock in Old Town. So it varies. It just depends on what the needs of the city are that year, and if the programs are actually eligible, because they have to meet all of the eligibility requirements for construction. They have to serve a certain population. They have to be in a CDBG target area, and they have to be in eligible activity.
So has the monies been exhausted? And I think there were 55 applications submitted, right? Fifty-four?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Mm-hmm. Has the funding been exhausted? Is that the question?
Yeah, so in other words, was it used 100%, and all this qualifies for that?
Yes, so this Exhibit A on the staff report shows a total allocation of what we estimate funding levels to be for 17, 18. At this point, they're only estimates, because HUD hasn't determined final allocations, but we adjust the numbers when we receive those, usually late April, sometimes as late as May.
And for the crime-free multi-housing, does that include, I'm thinking, PFAL and Neighborhood Watch programs, or it does not?
I believe it's more, I don't know if it's Neighborhood Watch. I believe it's more focused at the officers going into the apartment complexes and-
Yeah, the crime-free multi-housing works with the landlords to help them become crime-free. So it's a combination of, you know, entry security, but also making sure that tenants are good tenants and aren't committing crimes.
So then this would be besides the police officers that we have on the different beats under the contract versus Harino County? This is separate monies?
It's additional monies. It's $6,700.
So that they can spend time specifically, at least their application indicates it, so that they can spend time specifically going to the apartment complexes and not interfere with their regular duties.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Josie, thank you.
Mayor, I have one other comment on my. When we discussed the CDB grants back before we established the two members of the council, I also asked if it was possible that the end of the funding year, there could be an evaluation to determine if the projects had been successful or not, and if there was a way for those agencies that received money and they were not successful in carrying out their goals, if that would be brought back to the committee so that we don't continually fund agencies that don't succeed? Because there's a lot of agencies that are kind of in line for funding to the staff. Has that been done, or is there any way to do that? It may be something that simply can't be done, but it seems like there ought to be some kind of an annual evaluation.
That is a factor that staff does consider annually as a part of the application process. So there's a number of different criteria, but that's a very important criterion, past performance. And if there are performance issues, I've actually seen where applicants for forthcoming fiscal years don't get awarded or get awarded at a much reduced level because of the appearance of not being able to spend the funds. I've also seen, and it's a part of the committee's process, that if altogether funds from an applicant are not spent, they'll actually, after a period of time, I believe it's three years, will they actually reallocate those monies for forthcoming application years.
Anna Collins is going to educate us all, because she's the one who's really been doing this for all those years.
And I'm a little nervous. I don't normally speak in front of the public.
Well, you do. I terrific your job, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Part of our CDBG, our HUD grants process, at the end of the fiscal year, is our CAPR, which is our Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. That is actually a report that we have to submit to HUD 90 days after the close of the fiscal year. And that tells HUD how our grant recipients, our sub- recipients, our city departments have actually performed over the year. Normally, at the beginning of our fiscal year, our sub- recipients will let us know how many people they plan on assisting, and they have to report to us quarterly. We put that into our federal system, which is the IDIS system, and then at the end of the year, we compile all that data and put it into a report. Last, I believe, September, we came to the council, presented the CAPR, and that was our evaluation report. Recently, we received a letter from HUD giving us an evaluation of that evaluation report, and actually, it was very good. There was a few minor things that they had questions on that they didn't see in our report, so our letter back to them, we actually pointed out the pages that they were on and made those corrections. So we do have that, and we can also condense it, if you would like, and we'll bring it to the- to the council so you can see our performance.
I know it's something that's very thorough, and...
Yes.
And you're very careful as to, I mean, you scrutinize everything, so nothing is left undone.
We do, we do.
And we know for a fact, because we work with you.
Yes, it's part of our process. From beginning with our applications, we have to make sure that the applicant and the activity that they will be carrying out with the funds is an eligible activity. The people that they're directed, you know, to help, and also their performance is very important to us. And we do, you know, monitor them, we go out, we see their facilities, and we question them if there's an issue. We also look at their audits, so they are scrutinized as much as we are.
Please include me on those field trips. It'd be great to see what's happening.
Sure, usually in October is when I go out, so I will let you know.
Thanks, Lo, you did great.
And I don't have a comment for her, but now I have something that I'd like to share. So I'm hoping that the City of Victorville is not depending on these CDBG block grants, that we are not considering funding the community services when it comes to our CIP or approving our budget. I wouldn't like to see them dependent on CDBG block grants, I would like to see us starting to fund them more.
When we go through the budget process, isn't this part of the income for total overall?
This will be included in the budget, yeah.
Yeah. But it's discussed again as a part of the budgetary process?
It's included, I don't know that it's discussed, because the decision would be made tonight, but it is part of the overall city budget, yes.
Okay. Well, we'll have another cutout if we have questions. All right, thank you.
Need a motion?
Well, I will, I will motion to approve this, but I would also, as a part of the motion, like that when, get this, this is very thick, and I tried to get through it and I couldn't. And I'm familiar with the HDA grants, so that when this becomes ready, that we get it before it goes on the agenda. It's almost impossible to get through this if we are, if we have an inquisitive mind, and all us up here do. So if we can get this ahead of time, so if we have questions, we could discuss it with the staff. But it's a great job, and thank the staff, but in the future, it'd be really helpful to get this a week or two weeks early. Anyway, the motion is to approve, I don't think it can be conditioned, but I think you understand the feelings of councilmembers.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Now we move on to Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar, items C1 through C9 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
I'll request to pull item number five, Madam Mayor, please.
Very well, item five.
And...
And three, okay.
And I'd like to pull four.
Okay. Do we have any ques...
Item C3, my only concern is that, because this involved a lot of discussion last time, I don't think it ought to be a consent item, I'd like to just see a separate vote on it. Changing that zone, making the zone change on this very road.
Okay.
I would agree with that. Yeah, I think if it's a non-controversial item at all, there's nothing wrong with putting it on the consent.
Other discussion.
But whether there's a discussion, I would agree. Thank you for bringing that up.
And I also have a comment on C3. So on April 4th, there was an agenda written, on the written communication, that clearly I didn't support, and I voted no to rezone, due to the conceptualization of a plan that could potentially bring in a warehouse, that could potentially also bring products from heavy industrial contents. Today, April 18th, item C3 appears to be a calendared item to vote, a C1 to a C9, with one motion to adopt. This process that the City of Victorville has used as procedural may cost members of the council to overlook the consent calendar and vote yes for approval, which later on could be perceived as a conflict for any council member if their frenemies decide to show any ambivalence in decisions. So the procedural process can be taxing, and at times, the decision is not always an apprenticeship matter. So I appreciate for Councilmember Kennedy for looking out for that, I was looking out for that, too.
Well, I think staff puts on things on consent calendar they believe are no longer controversial, they may have been, but they aren't now. And our job is to pull the things that we think need special attention.
In regard to, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no.
In regard to item number five, this license agreement by between Sterling Capital Investment LLC and the Southern California Logistics Airport, my understanding is that we have a contract where they are, Sterling Capital Investment is responsible for the development of property outside the fence, or at least not on airport property. And yet, there's always swaps made. Wouldn't that require modification to the agreement, or a new agreement, or...
We actually have prepared modifications to the agreement that have been considered by this board. Those are subject, however, to FAA approval of the land swap, and because of the delays in the FAA, we are trying to do this as an accommodation to basically do a temporary swap of properties until the FAA has fully approved the land swap. But that concept has already been prepared and approved by this board with respect to proposed amendments to the Sterling documents.
But is this agreement then subject to their approval, or do we prove it anyway, and then wait till after the fact to see if there's any pushback from FAA?
These are actually properties that, under the context of the larger August 2016 agreement, these are properties that are outside the airport fence line and also not included in what we call the on-airport. So these are parcels that wouldn't have, require approval of the FAA. What effectively this is doing is it's allowing us to fulfill the intent of that August agreement for those properties that don't fall under the FAA, but because the August agreement was a much larger, or involved a much larger area that did include FAA approvals on certain properties, none of these, that agreement can't be fully effectuated. So what we're doing in the meantime, and this is probably the second one that we've brought to your attention, is we're actually exercising these license agreements so that we're able to effectuate the intent, pursue transactions, and in particular, to these three lots, there have been transactions identified, and the reason for the quick need to take action on these items is we actually had transactions pending this type of license agreement.
Okay. I guess really what I want to get to is that airport received grants for gasoline for the airplanes, and there was to be a pipeline constructed, and my understanding is that that was supposed to be operated by contract. Is that station going to be operated by contract? Was it the contractor that bought the gasoline trucks, because there's no longer going to be a pipeline, I suppose? Or is that going to be operated by Sterling?
To answer the latter part, operated by Sterling, the answer is no. We have received grants to build not only the fuel farm, which I think you're speaking to, but we also received grants to build the pipeline and what we call a remote loading rack, which is all installed and now entirely operational. There's not a requirement that we operate that under contract, but we have chosen through our agreement with Millionaire Lease Agreement, where they are the FBO, they provide fueling services, so they actually do the operations and maintenance of that fueling rack. But separate from that, they own, their own or lease their own trucks, which are independent from us, and that's something that they're responsible for, actually taking the trucks that they own or lease and actually filling them up at the station, and then basically going straight into plane with the fuel.
Thank you.
I move approval of the consent calendar, except for items C3 and C5. I didn't hear any reason not to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Ms. Gomez, excuse me, you're not supposed to be using your phone while we're in the meeting.
Not using my phone to text.
Well, you're using your phone.
No, I'm not. Would you like to continue?
Can we approve this without the exception of three, four, and five, since we have a, there was a motion to withdraw those, and can we just have it amended motion to go ahead and include, or do you want to do them separately?
I would assume you have a motion to approve C1, 2, 6, 7, 8, and 9.
Okay.
Yes.
And then come back and do three, four, and five with a separate action?
Correct.
All right.
That's my motion.
My second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we need a motion for three, four, and five?
Correct.
So move.
Want to do all three together, or you want to do them separately?
I haven't spoken to C4.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so for C4, on April 4th, 2017, minute approvals. Item D4, no on the minutes to disclose that no letter of intent and no resume was submitted, and there was no motion made to appoint Mr. Mathias to the legislative review. He was present in the Victorville chambers during that agenda item. The other thing is to amend April 9th, the cleanup day, to say April 8th, it was not The first part discloses that there was no resume or letter of intent submitted by Mr. Mathias to be considered for the legislative review. He was present in the chambers during that agenda item. The minutes do not reflect any of that. So there's an assumptions, there's an assumption or an implicitness that there was a submittal of a resume and a letter of intent in order for me to make a motion to nominate Mr. Mathias, and that was not the case. There was no letter of intent, there was no resume, there was no motion, I did not nominate Mr. Mathias, and that was not reflected in the minutes.
There is no reference to Mr. Mathias in the minutes at all. I was not at that meeting, but I understand that wasn't discussed at all.
No, we weren't able to discuss it, because when Mr. Cox asked, I said, no, there's nothing in that regard, but that they show up in the agenda as part of something that we would be discussing. So in other words, if anyone were to look up that information, they would see legislative review, they would look at Mr. Mathias, but they would not see that there is no, there was no intent for a resume, letter of intent to show up. So I think that clarifies a lot of the misnomer that has been occurring, and I don't want to get into that aspect, because I think it would create a lot of possibly back-and-forth bickering, and that's not what we're here for, we're here to be a team. So all I'm asking is to reflect that on the minutes.
I don't think we put things in the minutes about what didn't happen.
We don't. And any change to the minutes, first of all, has to be approved by a majority of the council, but city council minutes only reflect actions taken.
Because I've seen in prior, and I'm not talking about the minutes, about the agenda, where we'll have something reflected, and then we'll vote on it. And so it reflects what we did the prior meeting. So in other, so what I'm going to say for the record, I've said it, and if that's enough and suffice, then I guess that's enough.
I don't really understand, but I'm not disagreeing with you. You indicated that the individual was here. Since the individual wasn't discovered, discussed, they didn't submit anything, they didn't come to the podium, how are we supposed to know the individual was here? So, I don't know why we would want that in the minutes.
Well, I would want it to show that an individual did not, there is no resume, there was no resume, no letter of intent, so why even talk about the individual, right? But it was talked about.
There, if someone looks at the actual agenda, they can see that there's no resume or letter attached.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if it's enough for me to put it on the record, I don't want to create an argument, that was enough, and it's clear for me. That's all I'm saying.
Well, your comments are on the record, I don't see any reason to amend the minutes, or I think we should approve the minutes.
You can't not approve the minutes, because April 8th was a cleanup day, it was an April 9th, so I'm sure it's probably a day difference, but you want to still amend the minutes to at least say April 8th, which is an accurate date.
If there is an incorrect date, yes, that can certainly be amended.
Yes, so then that should be amended, and we should not say that it should not be amended, because there's at least that portion that needs to be amended.
We'll correct the date.
Approval of item C4?
The corrected date.
Was it corrected?
Corrected date.
C4.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously. And there needs to be an action on C3 and C5, I believe.
Yeah.
Move approval of item C3.
And five, or just three?
And five.
And five, might as well do both.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
So a vote no would solidify what I had said in the beginning, is that correct?
You're voting, all you're doing is voting no on C4 and C5.
I voted no in the beginning, and then C3, I'm still not in agreement, so no.
C3, sorry, C3 and C5.
Right, so I'm just clarifying that that's what's going to appear.
It's going to appear that you voted no on C3 and C5. If you want to take them separately, you could have a motion on each one separately.
We do.
On C, do a motion on C3, then do a motion on C5.
Yeah, we need a little bit of clarification here, because there's a lot of confusion now.
Yeah, so Mr. Kennedy motioned for C3 and C5 together, thinking that would be innocuous just to take them together because they've been discussed. However, I think Ms. Gomez wants to vote no on three and yes on five, so rather than taking them together, I would ask, and for her, that you split them back apart and take C3 first and then C5.
Let's do each one individually, so we can move on, okay?
Motion for C3.
C3, motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Item C4?
C4, a vote has been taken on C4.
Five.
C5 would be.
C5?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
That cover everything now?
That covers it.
Okay, we move on to written communications. Item D1, Authorization of Application for Recycling and Recovery, Cal Recycle City Country, County Recycling Grant. A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California, Authorizations of Middle of Application for Payment Programs and Related Authorizations. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 17-010, authorizing application for grant funds, ratifying the expenditure plan, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for program administration.
Do we have discussion or a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, Award of Contract to CA Rusmasan, Inc., for the La Mesa Road, Nisqually Road, and Amethyst roadway rehabil... Roadway Rehabilitation Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council appropriate an additional $3,760,000 from Fund Two Fifty Measure I and $1,057,000 from Fund Two Thirty, the local transportation fund, and award a contract to C.A. Rasmussen, Inc. in the sum, the sum of bid schedules A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I in the amount of $10,080,000, $80,316.88 for the La Mesa Road, Nisqually Road, and Amethyst Roadway Rehabilitation Project.
Madam Mayor, just a comment. I don't remember ever seeing a bid that large with, with four contractors bidding that close. Either that's a great job of specifying the details of the contract. That's a closed bid.
It is a closed bid, yes. Unfortunately, our engineer's estimate was a bit off by three and a half or so million dollars, so, but the closeness of those bids kind of educates us on the fact that those are good bids. I mean, everyone bid essentially the same. What has happened since we first dreamed up this project is cost of materials has risen significantly, and that's why they're so close is they're all bidding on the same materials.
Are you warning us that we're going to see change orders on this?
No, I'm not, but I, I suppose I am warning you that any other major roadway construction projects that we consider in the future are probably going to come in higher than what we originally anticipated. At this point, we will make adjustments as those bids go out to the engineer's estimates, but it doesn't mean that we don't build projects, it means that it takes longer to build projects because each one costs a little bit more.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D three. Award of contract to American Asphalt South, Inc. for the Green Tree East Slurry Seal Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council waive a minor irregularity on Schedule A to read Green Tree East instead of Brentwood and award a contract to American Asphalt South, Inc. in the amount of $766,808.35 for the Green Tree East Slurry Seal Project.
And question again. Are you sure that this include, this is two projects, Green Tree East and Southern California Logistics Airport?
Yes, just looking at the Schedule A and Schedule B, you'll actually see the two different projects specifically identified in the, in the bid results.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D four. Contract change order to Eleknor Belco Electric, Inc. for Mojave Drive Amethyst Road Traffic Signal. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council appropriate an additional $262,500 from Fund Number Two Hundred, Street Lighting, and $87,500 from Fund Number Two Fifty Measure I. Include this project in the city's capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017. Add this project to the Measure I Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2016, 2017, and approve a contract change order to Eleknor Belco Electric, Inc. for the Nisqually Road First Avenue Traffic Signal Project in the amount of $158,000 for the Mojave Drive Amethyst Road Traffic Signal.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment for the record, please.
Yes, go ahead.
I, this is a signal that's needed, and I have no reason to vote oppose it right now, I'm going to approve it, but I am opposed to $262,500 from the street lighting fund. I don't think that was the intent when we adopted the street light, very well may be, very much like the governor's latest tax proposal. It can actually be used for anything, and when it's all over and done, probably very little will be used on roads and most of it will be used on his projects. I hate it when we tell the public we're going to have an assessment citywide and then start spending money to save it from the Measure I or the, or the, or the gas tax monies. I am going to approve it, but I'm going to request that the city council review the street lighting fund very closely during the budgetary process. Move approval with that explanation.
I need a second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti, all those in favor?
Before there's a vote, I have a comment. There's a, a street lighting fund, so this shouldn't be coming from Measure I. Can you tell me a little bit more about that fund? I wasn't aware that we had that fund.
Yeah, the street lighting fund is a fund that was adopted by the voters, I want to say, two years ago or so, maybe three, that pays for streetlights, both, you know, the, the white lights that you can see from, and also a portion of it pays for traffic signals as well to a certain degree. So this is actually a mix of funding, some coming from that street lighting fund and some coming from Measure I.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D five. Contract award for Transportation Center Landscape Rehabilitation. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council award a contract to David Ullis Landscaping Development, Inc. for the rehabilitation of landscaping at the Transportation Center.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Have a question?
So do I.
Where's the funding coming from?
I believe this funding is coming from our Water Conservation Division. Is that correct? I see a nod from the department head. So the, the large, kind of overgrown juniper bushes will be replaced with waterwise plants with bubblers and spray sprinklers.
The comment that I have basically stems off D five, but not particularly, so if we want to take a vote first and then let me make the comment, I, that could also be done. If not, I'll proceed with my comment. So in light of this agenda request and recommendation, I, I'd like to see an agenda recommendation for awarding a project landscape plan to rehab the site visibility of Seventh Street. The site visibility will address the lack of aesthetic beauty found on one of our Victorville's Main Street. Before it appears on the agenda, I'd like to see the bid, the bidding amounts to increase the beautification of Seventh Street and Green Tree.
Have, have you been going to our planning commission meeting? Because they literally
Have not.
Just looked at plans that I believe May second are going to be up on the wall for the council to consider, something that we technically probably don't even have to bring to council, but we'd like to get the council and the public's input on that. Yes, we do have some plans that are intended to be before the council May second. I also intend to, before the week is up, actually have some illustrations available for display so that the council members actually can review and offer comments in advance.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D six. Amendment to agreement with Albert Grover and Associates for Old Town Specific Plan Update Traffic Study. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council amend the consultant professional services provider agreement with Albert Grover and Associates to add services for the Old Town Traffic Study in an amount not to exceed $49,000.
I have a comment on this one, too.
I, I have a card here that I need to call. Romero Rodriguez.
Yeah, my question is for the services by Mr. Albert Grover of forty-five, forty-nine thousand dollars. I'd like more information. I read the backup material about the assessment over the street lighting, eleven intersections are going to be assessed, and at the end of the backup materials, I see an original estimate of 135,000 plus this 49,000, which is a total of 184,000 for the Route sixty-six, the, the old, old Victorville. What is the actual assessment he's going to do for the street lighting, the parking? Are we, is the city, the town, us, the citizens going to be able to suggest any, any additions or any suggestions for, for the modifications or re, rebuilding of that part of the town? Or is it just, he's just going to go down and say this is the suggestion? What is exactly that he is going to assess the, the consulting service that he's applying for this, is my question.
Are you speaking on D four or D six?
D six.
Okay.
For Albert Grover and Associates, that's where we're on right now.
So, Madam Mayor, I'll offer a brief explanation. As you're aware, the planning department has been in Old Town, I think, twice now. There's still one more time to go down and to get public input on the revision of the Old Town Specific Plan. One of the elements of that specific plan is the traffic study, so Albert Grover and Associates will be, if this is approved, will be performing that traffic study. I don't have the level of detail as to the exact steps that the firm will take in order to assess that traffic study. I don't, I would imagine Mr. Metzler does not, so we would probably need Mr. Gingler to come down and give a little bit of an explanation as to how one of these is put together. He's probably done a, a few in his life, so, at the appropriate time.
And second question to that, also, one of my questions is, what is a horizon year 2025? Is that just something that's called for a service, or is it actually, you guys are planning till 2040? Is, what is, what do you guys mean in the backup materials when you mentioned horizon year of 2025, horizon year of 2040?
Again, I would ask the city engineer to come down to, to discuss that piece of the project.
The reason I'm asking is, is we're, I'm a car buff and I've traveled through Route sixty-six to part of the whole country, and to me, actually live here and be part of this historical place for our car people, we want to be able to see what we can put our little two cents in, what we can suggest or, or see history being made at the moment. That's the reason we're asking all these questions.
Okay.
So just the question was about the, the horizon 2025 and the horizon 2040 and the original, the, the estimate of 183,000 dollars for the services of the professional consulting services of this, of this entity.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you'd like, Mr. Gingler can come down to answer those and any questions at the council.
Yes, he can.
So as Mr. Robertson was saying, we're hiring a, we're recommending or requesting to hire a traffic consultant to prepare this traffic study that will be part of the circulation study that will go into this revision to the Old Town Specific Plan. The consultant will be engaged in public workshops, that's part of their, their work scope, so we've initially identified some circulation alternatives, they're going to be presented to the public, we'll get public input on those, and then there's, there's an opportunity to make further revisions or select certain alternatives that we think make sense. As far as the 2025 and 24 to horizons, those are, the 2025 year is more of a near-term improvements, things that are maybe a little more feasible to implement because of funding constraints. The 2040 horizon year is for the longer-term improvements when funding may be available, and that's also the traffic model here, when we have the future traffic, the volumes will go into the study, and that, that was looking at that longer-term use, that's why we looked at those two, two different horizon years. The 135,000 dollar contract, that's our traffic engineering service contract with Albert Grover and Associates, they have ongoing traffic engineering services, so this study is, it's an amendment to the, to that contract, so that's where, where those two amounts come from.
Yeah, the 145,000 dollar original contract is the entire city as projects are needed, not just Old Town.
Correct.
The study is an amendment to, to what contract?
Well, we, we already have a contract with Albert Grover and Associates, they provide traffic engineering services for the city on an annual basis, and so this would be adding to that contract, they would be doing this study, be over and above the services that they're already providing for us if this gets approved.
So then, may we suggest perhaps that a bid for other consultants at the moment would not be prudent?
We, it would not be, actually be a bid, we could have gone out with a request for proposals to, for traffic engineering companies and gotten a number of proposals on this study and evaluated them and selected a consultant, that certainly would be an option. In this case, we were recommending to do an amendment to Albert, Albert Grover and Associates' contract, we've been satisfied with their services, they've done other studies for us, and to, frankly, to fit the timeframe for the workshops, we thought that would be a better option.
They have a lot of institutional knowledge about Victorville and
They do.
Growth and our development and all this would, if we
Which is very
Find somebody new, we've got to re-educate them from the ground up.
That's true.
How long have we been working with the associates?
I'm trying to remember, I'm going to think approximately fourteen years, there were a couple of years where they weren't working for us, but almost all those fourteen years.
I'm assuming that this is not the only project that the associates have worked with us regarding Old Town.
They've, they've done many studies for us over the years.
And what's the purpose of the traffic study circulation?
We want to look at alternatives to the existing condition. As an example, on Seventh Street today, you have two lanes in each direction, one of the alternatives would be to look at one lane in each direction with some on-street parking and shifting some of the traffic over to the other streets. It's looking at things like that.
Yeah, one of the, one of the, I guess, the requests from the old folks in Old Town and actually from myself is to try to find a way to get all of the through traffic off of Seventh Street, the people that are using Seventh Street to commute back and forth from work to home and typically don't stop at those shops, just creates additional traffic and makes the, reduces the walkability of that area, so if we can get the through traffic off to where Old Town becomes a destination for people to go to, to be outside, to be, have an, have an outdoor shopping experience, it may attract that type of business, but if you've got, I don't know how many, Brian, 20,000 vehicle trips a day or so going down Seventh, I have no idea.
I think it's actually more than that.
That, yeah, and they go by it every day, they probably aren't going to stop in those shops, and it creates, you know, some of the traffic nightmares that pedestrians experience in that area.
And a recurring complaint we've heard has been the speed of traffic going down Seventh Street and, you know, trying to put in lights and do other things, but the, the idea of just getting that traffic off of Seventh Street could make a lot of sense for Old Town.
It could.
Could, yeah.
So in terms of the traffic study, is it because of the parking or is it because of the traffic flow, or is it just a study to figure out if we're indeed, as the city manager was saying, is to have an experience where you can walk? What is, what's the purpose?
It really entails all those things, that's the circulation pattern, the traffic volumes, parking, the compatibility with the land uses, it really involves all of that.
And additionally, at some point, when the, the Old Town Specific Plan is ready to be adopted, once it's once it's been through all those public processes, it needs to have a current traffic study as part of that, one element of that specific plan. So, we're required to redo this as well.
Correct.
When do they propose to start this update or traffic study?
They would start probably within a week after the approval, if this gets approved.
Reason I ask, we have a major, major project going on at D Street and the freeway. And from my observations, the two or three times I've been down there, because of the bottleneck, the Apple Valley traffic is turning up Seventh Street. And when the left-turn lane from D Street to Seventh Street gets backed up, they're turning on His Berry Road, they're turning on Sixth Street, they're turning on Eighth Street. So, it seems like to me, we're going to get some false numbers if we start. Shouldn't we wait until that project is approved? And then traffic will have an easy flow to pursue northerly on Seventh Street to the freeway and then south or north? And that traffic will be relieved from those streets and we'll get more true numbers?
That's a good point. Fortunately, we do have some numbers before that project we can use. We already had some traffic volumes and some turning them accounts before the I-15 construction took place. But yes, I've noticed that there has been a lot of traffic diverted off of D Street.
Well, the couple of times I've noticed that people who are going to the freeway and are not familiar, they're actually making U-turns after waiting in line to get on the freeway. They're making U-turns and coming back and turning up Eighth Street or Seventh Street. So, there's gonna be a lot of false numbers until they get that project finished, I would think.
But we do have previous counts before that project started. And then the future counts are gonna come from the traffic model. So, I don't think that'll really delay our study.
Thank you, and I have no further questions.
A motion?
I will move that we approve this proposal as recommended by staff.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D seven, discussion and possible action regarding translation services. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
This information was compiled at the request of Councilmember Gomez. Any subject action or further direction for staff is at the discretion of the City Council.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, shortly after Councilmember Gomez was elected, she raised a question regarding translation services. And staff was directed to find out what that would look like and especially what that would cost. And it took longer than expected, but we did not find a silver bullet that we expected to. I believed, based on a few conversations and maybe an assumption, that there would be some sort of technological solution, some kind of a plug-in device that could translate voice into, you know, any number of languages, which I think I could do on my phone if I went to a foreign country. But as it turns out, that's not the case. What we learned was that any translation that occurs is done by a human and humans are paid an hourly rate. There would be a certification, I guess, the law is not clear that there is a certification requirement, but just to provide the city with coverage for risk of, you know, something being mistranslated, I would highly recommend that we require some sort of certification if you choose to move forward with this. At this point, we aren't particularly asking for specific direction. More a discussion about if you want us to do additional research or if you want us to proceed one way or the other.
Since this is my item, I'd like to speak to it first. That means yes. So, over forty-eight percent of Victorville residents are Hispanic. That's per the community assessment that was just brought into council on April fourth. So, I'd consider, I would consider the audio streaming to begin discussions in order to incorporate this matter to be a part of the upcoming budget. The city of Victorville has never seen that here. And being over forty-eight percent, over forty-eight percent Hispanic speakers or Hispanic surnames or whatever it may have you, that population is not currently represented in that matter. I've had a lot of them here, have to have their friends translate for them. So, I would consider and I would hope my colleagues would also consider not just further discussions, but bringing this up in the upcoming budget so that we can begin to incorporate more of the community so that they're more aware and understand that their tax money is actually being hopefully managed by every one of us and we're being kept accountable on their behalf.
The fact that forty-eight percent of our population is Hispanic does not mean that forty-eight percent of our population doesn't understand English or doesn't have a command of that language. The language that we are born with is not a choice. We learn it growing up as infants. We don't choose that language. But when we adopt another country where a different language is spoken, learning that language is a choice. Virtually all the Hispanics I know have developed a command of this language. I'm confident there are some that have not. But those who have not have made that choice, 'cause English can be learned. And all we have to do is look rounded up kids. We can see that from all countries. English can be learned. Parents can learn. I probably speak better Spanish than Mr. Cox, maybe better than Mr. Negrete. Because I made a choice in high school to learn Spanish. I'm not as good as I'd like to be, 'cause I'm not immersed in the language. If I lived in Mexico, I believe I'd be fluent within six months. It's a choice. We've got a small part of our population who's made the choice not to learn English. I'm not willing to spend ten thousand dollars of the citizens' money to allow that small group of people to enjoy that choice. It just doesn't make sense to me. Keep in mind, the city of Victorville charges the Little League baseball leagues five thousand dollars every year to pay for their lights in the baseball parks when they play baseball. I got a real problem with this and I'm not gonna support it. Not gonna spend that money.
I'm not opposed to discussing this as a part of the budgetary process. I, I think most people know I have a huge number of Hispanics, directly and indirectly, that are my kinfolks. My daughter-in-law is born in Mexico. My other grandson's grandparents, great-grandparents, uncles, all born in Mexico, from Mexico. They all live here, they're all multi. I think they spoke, most of them speak three languages. They all speak English, they all speak Spanish. And I asked their opinion and I was surprised because I thought they would develop a reason why we need to do this, and it was just the opposite. In fact, what I have found out, that if you go back two or three generations, even though there are Hispanic names and a large number of them, the request by the grandparents, and in some case, the parents was, if you're going to be successful, you have to learn English. And installed in the children, not to be bilingual at home, which some regret. In fact, my two-year-old great-grandson is speaking both languages. For some reason, he speaks Spanish easier. But I haven't seen this need, if we need to provide translation to anyone. And it's important for them to be a participant in our activity, we need to do so. But I don't think we need to do so on the basis that we have names that are Hispanic, because I know so many, in fact, most of the people I know who are Hispanic don't speak Spanish at all. And so, it was a little bit of surprise to be here as long as I've been here to believe that we have a large segment of the population that needs interpreter. I've never seen that. And so, when I reach out to my extended family, they say it's simply not true. I don't know what to believe, but there are people who believe it. We need to look at it. We need to be fair to everyone. We need to represent everyone. And I don't think it would hurt to at least keep it on the table to look at as a part of the budgetary process because once this makes headlines and once people start discussing it, we're going to get input from the general public. And I think we'll know a lot more in two weeks or a month than we know right now. Right now, I can't support it, but depending upon the input and the need, I may. So, I don't wanna kill this item right now. I wanna be fair about it. Ready?
Madam Mayor, I have some comments. Very similar to the state of California and how they just ran through a gas tax and registration car tax. You start to see folks reveal themselves and there's a process for doing things. And when our elected officials run things through, I can tell you one thing, just sitting back, you know, I've been in California my whole life. They're not done taking the money, you know? They're gonna come through with all these naive misguided things and they're just gonna run them through. And so, I was shocked what happened. But I would like everyone to understand that we are a decision-making body. And as a decision-maker, this proposal was done in such a terrible way. First, it was brought up in open council with no backup information, nothing to make a decision on, just a proposed need. Well, I prefer and I've asked that any new ideas be socialized with the city staff first. We may have something in plan already in the pipeline. This happens all the time. But anyway, getting a idea socialized through the staff and researched properly, especially identifying the requirements and the costs and all of that, plus a legal review. We have a city attorney. My first question would be to the city attorney. Are we legally required to do this? And if it's not, then it's a non-issue and it's wasting our time. And we spent a lot of time wasted. I've heard things about Trump's America in this council recently, which that's neither here nor there. You know, we don't need to debate language. There is no, there's nothing here to make a decision on. And so, and I just have a feeling, like the state, this isn't the last one of these ideas. I'm sure there's gonna be another one and another one and another one without due diligence. Feasibility studies, research, numbers, impacts, sensitivity, what happens if the cost goes up? What if it goes down? I believe we started with the idea that there would be volunteers working on this. And I don't know anybody that wants to work for free, quite frankly, especially trying to type so fast. But again, I would, because the only reason why I've said anything to here today, this is not the last time we're gonna see something like this. And it's a waste of time. If there was a need, identify the need, research the need, socialize the need, and then bring it up here for consideration. We get email solicitations all the time. I get people telling me, you should do this, you should do that. That's great. That does not help anybody make a decision.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Well, I have something to say too. I was born and raised here. My family has been here one hundred and sixteen years in Victorville. For those of you that do not know that, I have a business. Ninety percent of my clients are Hispanic. I have worked with a Hispanic community. I have never brought this up here during a council meeting. But I, I just need to let you know that for over forty years, I have worked with the Hispanic community. Just today, I completed over six hundred income tax returns for Hispanic families. They all understand English. They may not speak it very well. I don't either, and I was born here. But they understand. And I'm all for children, for kids, for our programs. I rather see ten thousand dollars spent for kids, for their swimming pool, for their baseball games, for whatever. I don't see any need for a translator. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
So, in this research that you brought up, right here, which is research, it's not a waste of time. I'm sure you will, in the next few weeks, hear how not a waste of time this is. These are voters too. Other considerations in response to the questions that were posed in twenty-seventeen in regards to the California cities, city clerks. Of the twenty-seven respondents, fourteen cities indicated that are currently providing a language assistance for non-English speakers in the city council meetings. And you'll see of fourteen cities, there's five providing services on a regular basis. Does that have anything to do with legality? With eight providing services on a non-basis need, one city did not specify. Four allowed various levels of staff to assist. For the city, city of Ontario allows management-level employees to assist with translations once they're certified through Human Resources, while six indicated that they utilize a third-party vendor for translation services. This kind of waste of time is dependent on the person who sees it as a waste of time. As a public official that has been recently elected, I do not see this as a waste of time. A lot of the people that I've been meeting are that, Spanish speakers. And not only Spanish speakers, that includes sign language and other languages as well. And if you consider to see, we have a graph for the city council meetings. And it's interesting how March twenty-seventeen shows nearly eight hundred, so let's say seven hundred people, looking at the streamed lives compared to February, January, December, and then last year. So, you would begin to see a change. And right here, it says that twenty-five percent are individuals who work for the city. That's, that's a lot. So, we are being watched and we're representing a group of people. So, I don't think this is a waste of time. And you will always see a representation of the people come forth here. This is why we were elected. This is why we need to work as a team. There are very, there are many differences within each of us. But instead of focusing on the differences to work together, we should start focusing on the similarities instead of attacking each other. It doesn't make us look good. That doesn't role model for the city, that we have a city that needs to be healed itself.
Madam Mayor, I have one more comment, since we're gonna go back and forth. This is a question more for the city manager and the city attorney. Going forward, I understand if a certain council member has something of interest to add to the agenda. But after that, going forward, before the city staff commits resources and time to a subject, I'd wanna make sure that the entire council has a consensus on whether to do that or not.
That's our typical practice. If someone asks a question that can be easily answered through research that's already been done or if it's a report or a request for a document, we'll simply provide it. But if it involves any level of research or any meaningful level of staff work, then we advise that council member to please ask that it be added to the agenda so that we can get direction from the full council.
Before we make a decision here, I do have one card that came in late, but I have a Barbara Wellington or
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. My name is Barbara Whittington. I am a resident of Victorville, California. I have lived here for over twenty-five years. One, I have never been so embarrassed to say that I live in Victorville until just now. To say that it is an option and a choice for somebody to get, to become an English speaker is beyond asinine. I worked for the county of San Bernardino, have worked for the county of San Bernardino for over twenty-five years. I look out here. Your counter, your chambers aren't even full. Maybe if you guys should start thinking, well, maybe if we can get a translator in here that people could listen, maybe they'd come and listen to you guys. But you guys say, oh, it's not necessary. All we're asked, she's asking is for you to research it. I speak English. Yes, I'm privileged. But there are so many people in this county that don't. And I can guarantee you that it wasn't a choice. They can't go to school. They can't They can't go to school, they can't get a job and find somebody to speak English to them. I just think that you guys need to look at it from all of it. And it's not just Hispanics. It could be Japanese, it could be an American sign language, it could be all kinds of different languages. Unfortunately, we are the melting pot of the world and it comes with the territory. So I think that you guys should just choose to research it. How hard is it to research it and find out if there is somebody that can work cheaper and do it? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
One more person. One more person, Maggie Martin.
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. On this topic of the English speaking, first of all, Councilman Kennedy, I could not have said it better. I loved every word of how you phrased that. The concern I have with Ms. Gomez is, is she brought up, I was with her when you were talking about different cities do different things, you know, translations and this, that, and the other. And then you, and then you lost me and it went in the toilet when you said, what does that have to do with legality? What they are trying to tell you is we do not have a legal obligation to provide those services. And if they choose not to, that's the way the cookie crumbles. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Either continue the research or...
I make a motion to continue the research on translation services.
Or terminate the...
Just made a motion.
I'm going to second the motion because I want to ask a couple of questions, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
The motion was to continue. Because, and I'm assuming that's continued until we take up the budget and so on. Does staff have any idea at all? The staff time that it would take? I'm just curious. Secondly, I think a question of the attorney. I always thought we were required to provide translation services if it was requested. Please answer that. And third, is it viable? Just asking in advance. If we have an item that needs a translation, I don't want to have a contractor and have someone sit here and pay a meeting after meeting and not need it. On the other hand, if somebody desperately needs the services, I don't want to deny it. So I'm caught in a catch 22, which is why I want to continue until the staff can look at it. But the problem is, I don't want it to be open-ended. I don't have a clue what this may cost or if it will serve any purpose. But I don't think that it hurts to have further discussion. That's reason for my second.
Let me comment on a couple of those things. They're somewhat interrelated. At this point, in all honesty, I don't know what's left for us to research. I think it's more a question of whether or not you'd like us to bring this back as part of the budget or not. I'm not sure where else we could go. We spent three or four.
There's a critical piece of information that must be researched. And without it, you can't possibly make an intelligent decision. And that is to know how large the population is that needs this service.
We could do that.
I'm not sure you can, but if you can, I'd like to find out.
I'm saying we could research that. My intent was regarding the actual translation. We've sort of exhausted our thoughts on how that could occur. So with regard to, oh, go ahead.
But every decision we make is driven by a need, a need of the community, a need of the city.
Not a want.
Not a want, not a wish, not a belief that somebody needs this or that or something else. Our job is to take care of the city. It's not, it's not to deal with the personal needs of individual people in their homes. That is not our job. Our job is the city. Streets, public safety, parks, those are the things that we're charged to take care of. Not people's personal needs at home. Those are for me to deal with in my own life.
If it's the council's direction, certainly we could research that need. I don't have an estimation as to time or cost on that.
How you do it?
Getting, getting back to Mr. Cox's original questions, we do provide translation services as a result of the Americans with Disabilities Act for the deaf. There is a three-day notice period that's required that we follow when we can. There have been shorter notice times that we've been able to accommodate. I'm not aware of any kind of a requirement for language other than English, except for sign language, of course. But if it's the council's desire, I think there could be something set up where if a request were made for a translator, one could be provided, you know, similar to the ASL translator on some kind of a notice system. But I'm not sure what that would look like. I'm just saying it is an option that could be considered.
As to the legality question, the general consensus is that it's not legally required. However, if a determination is made that you have a substantial number of non-English speakers in the community, a substantial number of less-than-proficient English speakers, then there may be a requirement under certain California statutes. It's not clear, it's somewhat factual, but again, the numbers have to be substantial.
And I would like some information, some real hard, solid information from the school district, adult education, our so-called free school system, how many language classes are offered through our school system that anybody can take advantage of at extremely nominal prices? So this idea that it's not a choice, I beg to differ. It is a choice. When you come to another country, it's a choice to learn that language. To learn it or not learn it.
I have another question for the CDBG block grants. To translate all the information for the disadvantaged or the poverty-stricken individuals, did that come to council so those documents can, could have serviced these individuals? Same thing with the community needs assessment. Did that come to council in order to be able to bring in? I'm sorry, but I'm speaking at the moment, I have the time.
We're on D7 right at the moment.
I am speaking on that. Did we have that? Because these are the translation services that we are discussing right now. So if those were not brought to council, I beg to differ why this one is being brought, is being brought to this, this level as well. That was just a comment. You can answer or you don't have to, but I know for a fact that I've already spoken and I have the responses.
I'd like to call for the question.
Move on.
There's a motion by Councilmember Gomez to continue research on the item and a second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Mr. Cox?
I voted aye, I said yes.
Pardon me?
You voted aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Aye, I'm sorry, I have a very soft voice. We both voted aye. Three to two, failed.
Motion. Vote, yes, three yes and Councilmember Gomez and Mr. Cox voting, I'm sorry.
Way around.
Councilmember Cox and Councilmember Gomez voting yes. And Councilmembers Negretti, Mayor Garcia, and Councilmember Kennedy voting no. Motion does not pass.
We move on to item D8. Purchase of MSA self-contained breathing apparatus. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council approve an additional appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $381,102.16 and authorize the city manager to submit a purchase order for the total amount of $434,243.16 to Bauer Compressor Inc. for the purchase of a MSA self-contained breathing apparatus.
It doesn't say so in the recommendation, but these are breathing apparatuses for firemen.
That is correct.
For our county, currently county fire contract.
That is correct.
I move approval.
Second.
I have a comment before that vote goes through.
The motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Mr. Negretti.
Air packs are to be worn on the backs of firefighters to supply the firefighters with clean breath when entering a place that is chemically involving. The life of the air pack is about 15 years. It's time to replace now. The annexation into the county would have taken up the cost, it would have been waived, but we weren't, we didn't approve the annexation. It didn't pass. I voted otherwise. However, annexation did not occur, so the cost was not waived and the cost is now up to the city to cover. I'm in support of this expense, although the city of Victorville did not anticipate the cost.
I believe we did.
No, we didn't.
Call for questions, then.
Well, let's be clear about one thing. This would have been in the county contract if we weren't paying it ourselves. We would pay for this, one way or the other.
Pay for it one way or the other.
Yeah, there was an assumption at the beginning of the budget year, as part of the budget, that the county, working through the City of Fontana, their contract there, that they would be successful in a federal grant, federal aid to firefighters, I believe. And ultimately, they were not. Therefore, this was budgeted at $53,000. So there was an anticipation of this purchase. But unfortunately, because the grant did not get approved, we have to fund the remaining portion, not just the match. So that's the additional appropriation of $381,102.16.
Right, and I spent nearly three hours with you in a conversation and I had specifically asked if the city of Victorville had allocated monies in terms of what the city, what fire protection services would need. And I was explicitly told that no, but we do have a $2 million surplus which would cover the cost. And so that's why my response was no, we didn't anticipate this cost. Therefore, we weren't looking at that cost. We had a specific amount. And then the pain came from the $2 million.
Not trying to enter into the political debate that's going on over whether we anticipated or not. Both of you are correct. We anticipated purchasing these. We didn't anticipate the cost being this high because of the grant. And yes, county fire had indicated verbally that if we ultimately annexed into county fire, we would not receive this bill because they would expire in August and they had agreed to simply cover it themselves. But you are correct that when we decided against annexing into county fire at this point in time to study that further, that's why we received the bill.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D9 is removed. Do I read the...
Mayor Garcia, I understand that you do have a card that's been submitted on this item.
Well, let me, item D9, discussion and possible action regarding the Legislative Review Committee, recommendation on Assembly Bill 199, CHU Public Works Private Residential Projects. And I do have...
Recommended that we just remove this from the agenda.
But I have a card.
The bill actually changed at the, well, the author changed the wording in the bill. Originally, the bill, when it was sent to the Legislative Review Committee, included language that referred to any political subdivision of the state, meaning city, county, whatever, water district, whatever. And the intent of the author, as has been explained to me, was that, was to close a loophole regarding the use of public redevelopment monies. So the change the author made was to change that, the wording of political subdivision to simply read a, any successor agency to a redevelopment agency acting in the capacity of the successor agency. So all it does is closes the loophole with regard to redevelopment funds and does not impose additional requirements on cities, counties, water districts, any political subdivision of the state. As a result, the Building Industry Association has removed their opposition to the bill, as have the Chamber, California Chambers of Commerce and several others. The intent, sending it to the Legislative Review Committee, I think, was good. But unfortunately for them, they researched it and the bill changed after the council sent it to them. That was the reason why we recommended just simply pulling the item at this point. Because we are probably not going to recommend one way or the other for the city to take a position.
Okay, there's Angel Esparza.
Good evening. I'm here to represent on behalf of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and as well as my brothers are here in attendance. The satisfaction that we have of this bill passing, we were here to voice our, voice our opinions on those who oppose. So we are grateful and thankful that this assembly bill passed. So thank you for your time.
I'm not aware that it's passed yet. I think with the opposition removed, I think it's very likely to pass at this point. I haven't heard that it passed or not. I don't know if it's gotten that far yet.
Okay, we move on to item number 10.
No, I have a comment on D9 as well. I found out at 5 o'clock that this is, this changed. And I'm not just going to retract just because it is, because I'm going to put it on the record and I wasn't aware that it could potentially come back. That means that the city might not either ask for an opposition or support it, or oppose or support in part of it. So I'm still going to read this in the record. So with a raise of hands, how many people in the council chambers know construction workers? How many of you have friends or family in the construction business? A recommendation to oppose an Assembly Bill 199 is not in the best interest of the working families. I'm expressing my strong support for that Assembly Bill by Assembly Member Two. The bill requires workers to be paid prevailing wage on residential projects that have any agreement with the state or political subdivision. Currently, residential constructions, privately, private property has specifically been excluded from the prevailing wage requirement. Prevailing wage law benefits blue-collar workers and their communities. By encouraging training, lowering the rate of injuries, promoting healthcare coverage, minimizing disruption to local labor markets, ensuring that minority and female workers receive prevailing wages, they encourage their participation in apprenticeship programs. Prevailing wage laws, laws like the Davis Bacon Act and many other federal statutes, over 60 of them, exist so that the purchasing power of the federal government is not used to depress local labor standards so that local wage and labor standards are not undermined.
Yeah, aren't we? I don't know where we're at.
I guess I can continue. Item D10. Amendment number two to Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement with David Evans and Associates. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council approve amendment number two to the Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement with David Evans and Associates in an amount not to exceed $67,800.
Approval?
Second.
I have a question on this one. Is this related to the one we just, we're talking about David Evans and Associates? Is the same one?
No, that was Albert Grover and Associates.
Okay.
There's a motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
D11. Councilmember Gomez, appointment to the Legislative Review Committee.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with Councilmember Negretti. Motion carries with Councilmember Negretti abstaining and Mayor Garcia voting no.
We have an addendum, D twelve. Councilmember Gomez, appointment to the Planning Commission.
We're going to move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
I'd like to make a comment first, please.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Gomez has made a point that individuals that are appointed should be vetted, and I got, this came in the agenda Friday. I did not get a chance to read it. I, in fact, I can't even find it. One of the things that I hope the city council will consider, by the way, I'm going to assume, since Councilmember Gomez has submitted the name, that she has, in fact, vetted the individual and everything contained in the letter is correct. I have no reason to believe otherwise. On the other hand, I tried to find out where these businesses are and couldn't find them, and I give up, it's not my job to do that, but I would hope that we would have a little longer time, and Ms. Gomez has submitted the name. I'm assuming that she has vetted the individual, she's willing to speak for the individual, that this bio is true and accurate, and without on the record, I will support this appointment.
I have a comment too before the vote goes on, if no one else has a comment.
We can just vote and eliminate.
I'd like to speak on his behalf. So, Paul, Paul Marsh has lived in Victorville for most of his life. His family came to Victorville in nineteen-sixty-four. His father retired from the George Air Force Base after twenty-two years of service. His mother retired from the Victor Valley Elementary School District. His mother was a teacher at Parkview Elementary School. In nineteen-seventy-five, he enlisted in the United States Army. He served until nineteen-eighty-two, in which he received an honorable discharge. He got married December twenty-first, nineteen-eighty. He's been married for thirty-seven years. Between nineteen-eighty-two and nineteen-ninety-four, his family and he resided in Louisiana and Texas. During that time, he worked in, he worked in the pathology department of Willis Nighten Hospital, Shreveport, Louisiana, and at Memorial Hospital in Houston, Texas. He was a pathologist assistant. He assisted with autopsies and other clerical duties. In ninety-four, he moved back to Victorville because his mother passed away. Initially, upon the return to California, he worked in the insurance industry because he was unable to obtain a position within the hospital system in California. With a young family and a, and a child with special needs, he wasn't afforded the luxury of returning to school nor obtaining certifications for California. In two-thousand-and-three, he began working at Rancho Motor Company Victorville in the sales depart, the sales department. He progressed into sales management positions with the company. He was a team leader, a business development manager, and sales manager. He is in the companies, he ran the company's Seventh Street Used Car location for a couple of years. As a sales manager, he did work with the finance department and bank. He left Rancho Motors Company in August twenty-thirteen. From twenty-thirteen to present, he's worked in the mortgage industry, single-family residences, commercial properties, hard money, and other types of loans. His task is to originate the lending process in which he evaluates and structures loans for individuals and businesses. In addition to working in the mortgage industry, he also works in a company that assists people in the restoration of credit and providing people with financial education. He's attended and holds a strong interest in the Root Program, revitalization, our old town. He's the Vice President of the Victorville Chamber of the NAACP. He's participating in meetings involving our High Desert Schools. He's participated in causes that address our homelessness and our children. The reason I vetted and I, I'm supportive of Paul Marsh is, just in times past, I've heard councilmembers says, well, ten to fifteen years in a business. Well, he has that. I've heard, well, he needs to have some kind of license. Well, he has that too. He needs to be entrenched in the community and have a stake. He has that too. So, if this person is not approved, I don't know what else to do. This is someone that I'm nominating, this is someone that I'm appointing. I don't know what it is that my councilmembers would like, if they're the ones that want to choose and then have me vote. I don't understand. He would be the fourth individual that I brought up, and that would be clear, that I know what I'm doing. They've given me direction publicly. There is nothing in policy or any council policy that says otherwise, which I've asked. We don't have any of that. So, this is who I'm submitting for a planning commissioner.
Madam Mayor, we have a motion, second, call for the question. Call for the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mayor Garcia, I understand there's a couple of cards that have been submitted on this.
The first one will be Bill Thomas.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, staff, and my fellow citizens. My name is Bill Thomas. I am a resident of Victorville. I'm also president of the Victor Valley NAACP, and I've known Paul for a couple of years now. Let me just share some things with you from my perspective. Paul, number one, is a very good listener. He's very attentive. He's a critical thinker. He's very analytical. He uses a strategic, strategic approach in problem solving. And even further, Paul, as was mentioned in the bio there, is a longtime resident of this city. He has a stake in this city, and I think he would be a real good fit for this position. I'm here in support of Paul Marsh, and I ask your support. Thank you.
I have another card, Maggie Martin.
Good evening again, Your Honor and Council. First of all, Councilmember Gomez, S-H-E-R-B-E, P-R-T is pronounced Shreveport, not Shrevport, Louisiana. Okay, so, I'm going to try and make it brief, but I got to be honest with you. I don't care what this man's credentials are. He can't even make a junior college-worthy resume. Instead of me, if he's here, I don't know, embarrass him and call him out, or Ms. Gomez on, on maybe not reviewing this, I'm going to step over here to Carol Lee and let her pass around, because while earlier, I'm just marking this grammatical sentence structure wrong, commas, periods, spelling, spaces missing, or spaces there. I would not want anybody working for, volunteer or otherwise, in this, in this capacity or for, paid for the city of Victorville with this. No way. So, here you go.
Can we call for the question now?
Call for the question, Madam Mayor. That takes precedent. Give me a vote.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
No.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti abstaining and Mayor Garcia voting no.
Okay, now we move on to public comments.
Actually, Madam Mayor-
Hello. Oh, I thought we were going to recognize councilmembers, but it says-
What's this recognition?
Madam Mayor, item E one was placed on the agenda at the request of-
I don't understand what this is.
Okay, item E one was placed on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Gomez to, for individual councilmembers to provide recognition to groups they feel deserve that recognition. I don't want to state it before you, Blanca.
Public has waited long enough. Let's, let's let public comment happen first.
Okay, we have public comments now. I do have one card. Michael Aranda. I think that's, Michael? Paul Marsh.
Good evening, everybody, and Madam Mayor and councilmembers. There is one, there's this one question that I wanted to kind of clear up. I think it was, it was about businesses that were questioned as far as not knowing their origin. On the back, if you look at the one that says, as far as insurance, I had an agency here in Victorville. The home office was Duluth, Georgia. So, that's where that question came up. Well, as far as having an out-of-state company, it wasn't an out-of-state company. The home office was in Duluth, Georgia, but my agency was here in Victorville. As far as the rest of the, as far as the mortgage, International City Mortgage, they're nationwide. They have, they have a home office here in Orange. They also have a home office in Reno, Nevada. Okay, but they are nationwide, and the branch office is here. I have, well, there's two, actually. I have a branch office up here in Victorville, and then there's a branch office in Rancho Cucamonga, but they're both in California. As far as doorway home loans, that's, that's an extension, that's a DBA of International City Mortgage. If there's any other questions or, you know, as far as locations, I've never held any businesses outside the, you know, state of California. Everything's been local, everything's been within California. My licenses and everything have been in California, as far as my insurance license, my auto sales license, and my mortgage license, everything's been California-based. So, that's, that's all I want to really address. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm heading on vacation first thing in the morning, so I'm going to ask to be excused. It's been a long, hard three months. I'm, I-
I understand you're excused.
No more public comments, can we go back to E one? Madam Mayor?
Well, I, I don't understand why we have that, but I guess E one?
Well, the, we have an item, recognition by councilmembers, and then we went to the public because public's been waiting a long time. There are no more cards, that portion is totally over. Oh, one more, I'm sorry.
I, I think we, there's, has to be a limit to. Diana Reyes.
Hello. I'm requesting more effective, effective housing authority services. I'm here to represent all the families who are struggling with finding an affordable home for their families, knowing that how Section Eight is being influencing the increase of rent costs and living costs in the High Desert, competing as well with first-time buyers, with investors who most of the times buy houses to rent it immediately for more, no less than twelve-hundred a month, well-known as Greta Nest, pushing many families to the edge and was one step away to be homeless or to depend on the government system. At the same time that we struggle with the poor available housing authority services that most of the time is hard to find opened. I've been renting a house for more than thirteen years and months, and the past December, the house got flooded twice. On January fifteen, my son is a victim of crime by DUI car accident and leaving him handicapped and broken hip, pelvis, and femur. After all the, the flooding and a moldy restroom that I request to the landlord to do all these repairs, it was so much delay. And just three weeks ago, the, the walk-in restroom that I needed for my disabled son was done just three weeks ago. After all the repairs, my landlord is evicting me. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have our city managers' report?
Madam Mayor, I want to go back to recognition by councilmembers. We keep skipping it.
Oh, okay.
We need to discuss it, please.
E one?
Oh, E one, I explained earlier, this was placed on the agenda at Councilmember Gomez's request for councilmembers to be able to recognize groups, individuals that they so deem. I don't want to say anything more than that, I'd rather have Blanca explain if she chooses to. Or did I cover it enough?
You did a swell job, thank you.
Okay.
On April seventh, the High Desert Association of Rialto, congratulations to, to Diane and all of her future endeavors, and thank you for also serving the High Desert with your services. Also, on April seventh, we had the World Jubilee Church. They had, they had their dedication service. On April eighth, the Second Mayor's Food Share Adelanto Twenty-Seventeen Easter giveaway encapsulated, encapsulated the leadership of many leaders in the High Desert. High Desert residents were blessed with Easter baskets, food, and much more. April thirteenth, Cars is a small business who will be recognized by Obernalti's Office in the coming months, and I'd like to recognize them for raising over ten-thousand dollars this year to the High Desert Phoenix Foundation, a charity organization who financially assists victims of crimes. Recently, the foundation wrote a check out to Sunset Hills Cemetery to help with the funeral costs that were incurred by the murder that occurred at Huck Park. And as most of you recall, that murder affected all of us, or at least nearly all of us. And so, I'm grateful for people like Cars that takes the initiative to raise money to continue helping people in need. This was in Victorville. Congratulations to the High Desert Crossroads. On April fifteenth, they held their first fundraiser.
I want to, I have a question, please. And then, my understanding of E one is with a request for, for a councilmember to recognize other organizations. I didn't know you were going to go through a whole list of people you wanted to recognize now.
Thought it was one.
Well, I didn't even know what it was, but my understanding from staff was you had made a request that individual councilmembers be able to recognize, I guess, people that the council hadn't recognized, but I don't know what your request is. I mean, I, I know Adelanto's a wonderful city, but I don't know why we would recognize somebody in Adelanto. It's up to the Adelanto Council to do that, or Apple Valley, or Hisparia, or other county. Pardon?
Victorville residents were receiving Easter baskets and food and a lot of other items. So, to me, I'm recognizing a business that's helping our citizens.
Please. We have a chamber, we have a rotary, we have Elks, we have Amets, we have group after group after group, and if we are going to do that, I can be here a couple of hours at the next meeting thanking all those individuals. We get requests from them to the city for the city to recognize them, and if individual councilmembers want to go as an individual, they can do that. But I don't understand, I don't think, I don't think we should have to sit here while you read a long list of people that you want to appreciate. Can't you just go to them and tell them you appreciate them?
I was at each of these events.
Well, I know, but I've been dozens of events.
I'm sorry, but this was my time, and I didn't relegate it to you.
But I'm going.
This is kind of rude for you to do. This why, this is why we have a procedure, and it's called E one, recognition by council members. It doesn't say Councilmember Gomez, and this is- It doesn't say councilmember Gomez, and this is my time. I was also elected by the people. So I'm going to continue for congratulations to the High Desert Crossroads. They serve the desert, their organization with benefits with the-